Well, I'd like to call this joint meeting of the Inspiring Spaces Committee and Hickory City Council to order. Couple of ground rules, I guess, or protocol guidelines, and I'm looking for any input that anybody might have. We have an objective of ending this meeting at 6:30 because we have a council meeting at 7:00. I'm game for letting anybody here that wants to speak after we get through the presentation to be able to speak until 6:30, or during the public comment period of our meeting that starts at 7:00. With that, I'm going to ask Stephen Schuford to come forward. I believe Stephen's going to be making the presentation, and I'll ask Stephen to introduce the members of his committee over here.
Okay, so Stephen deferred that to me, so I'll just be really brief. I'd like to introduce six of the 15 members of the Inspiring Spaces Committee. We've got Paul Kersher here, and Meg Locke, Scott Mitchell, Don Dorwood, Stephen Schuford, and Nancy Zagoroli, so they're all here, and we had four that were traveling, so they would have been here as well. It's just, it's been an amazing commitment with this group of 15, and they have worked with Land Design over the last two years to prepare this plan for Inspiring Spaces. The plan is complete now, and this final report is being presented to you for consideration. They worked really hard on the details of their priority projects, and we're really excited to share those with council tonight. So Stephen has a PowerPoint presentation that he will go through and hit the highlights, and then I think at any point you can ask him questions, but there's also just the whole group here for some time for Q&amp;A or discussion, however you see fit, after his presentation. So, thank you, and I'll turn it over to Stephen.
Let me clarify the protocol just a tiny bit. The members of the committee, you're encouraged to speak at any time you wish during this presentation or during this meeting. The same thing for all members of council, of course, but if there is time, we will also ask if any one of the audience would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so there's a lot to cover, and thanks for the intro, Andrea. We have done a lot of work, and I've gotten a lot of good help from everybody that you see here. Everybody, I think, is familiar with the fact, or relatively familiar with the fact that we, Land Design was hired some time ago to help us in developing recommendations, and they came back to us with a proposal that included, we guessed, over 50 different types of projects that we might consider as a part of this project. And what we've been particularly focused on doing in the committee over the course of the last, what would you say, six months or so, was really refining that down even further to, in a sense, get the best to the best, or at least to get, develop a recommendation for where it might be best to start. Backing up just a little further still, why, you know, why we were pursuing this in the first place, and I think the answer is pretty straightforward. It's for the community, and specifically for the economic development of the community. We felt like that, I think it's been said here by Mr. Lael here and others, you know, nothing changes if nothing changes. It was the goal of the committee to make recommendations that we felt like would very much be a catalyst, and was very much based on some of the success stories that we were exposed to and researched during the course of our work. So with that, I will get to the presentation, and at risk perhaps a little bit too long of a preamble, I'm not much of a storyteller, but I guess I would ask the folks in the room to imagine a situation, hypothetical, a family's driving from Charlotte to Hickory in this case, and the reason they're making that trip is they've been told by friends and family what a charming place it is, and what a unique setting it is to spend time with a family. They've been told that if, that they might park uptown and go down to the Science Center for a visit, perhaps walk or bike up to the Union Square, have a bite to eat, and proceed from there, perhaps down a pedestrian path along rail down to the lake, where they've been told they can rent kayaks and potentially catch a crawdad's game. Great day, great opportunity to experience a unique, the unique setting that Hickory has to offer, and here again, kind of a draw for everyone, and very much a unique experience for that family. So I think it takes that kind of imagination and that kind of thought to really, really get at the essence of the recommendations that we'd like to recommend to you today. We introduced members of the committee, not all are here, as was mentioned. And the way I think of Inspiring Spaces, which is a Hickory initiative, it really talks kind of neatly underneath the larger Innovate Kataba initiative, and specifically up under the inspiring and reinventing components of that initiative. Clearly, Inspiring Spaces, as the name suggests, is about inspiring the community, inspiring economic development, and reinventing, we very much see as being a part of that overall initiative. Clearly, there are sites that you're familiar with that are very much being reinvented as we speak, and we think the potential there is enormous, and very much is a part of our recommendations that we're going to talk to you about here tonight. Okay, so broadly speaking, if you were to see the larger map with all the projects, this would be lit up like a Christmas tree. And what we've done here, and here again, spent most of our time over the last, most recent months, was really kind of refine that down and distill it down to what we thought could be a core, a good start. And so what you have represented here, and what I'll be spending my time on this evening during my segment, is what you're seeing here, which are some very specific projects that we think constitute an excellent start to reinvigorating the community and economic development here in Hickory. Starts with creating a regional destination on our waterfront. Everyone is familiar, I think, with the Lackey Project, and the monies that have been committed there to Geithner Park. We feel like this is an excellent opportunity for the city itself and the community to get behind that and to leverage it in a very unique way along what we deemed as a committee to be a very unique asset to the community, which is the lake itself. There's public land, of course, that's held along the lake, there's the stadium there which was referenced, and the idea here is to develop a riverwalk along the lake that would very much allow us to, I guess in some sense, kind of wake up that asset, that sleeping asset to a certain extent, and make it truly a really special place for the community. We did have community meetings, that particular project did seem to get a lot of support from those that participated, and I think with good reason. There's a lot of opportunity, as we see it, down along the lakefront. So as you see here in the satellite map, we're basically talking about connecting Geithner Park with Fran Stadium going along, proceeding along the lake, under or over 321, depending on, I guess, other sets of circumstances, but the idea here is really to expose and really bring together, I guess, a set of contiguous land with scenic value. Obviously, there's recreational value, as I referenced before, whether it's renting boats, but in general, just enjoying a real unique asset for this community, which here again is the Kataba River. So some of the concepts clearly have been inspired by some of the communities we visited. One that you'll hear a lot about if you speak to the committee members, of course, would be Greenville. Chattanooga would be another example of a city that's done incredible job, you know, chipping in, if you will, developing the, from a public investment standpoint, waterfront property to develop a really unique space with the private investment coming thereafter, just as a natural course of things, as people really grab a hold and, in some sense, fall in love with that asset and with that experience. So some of those shots here you see would be representative of those types of concepts. And this was just a slide here again to, I guess, remind the group, and I think it's one of the things that I think is, makes sense about our proposals, that we're really, at the end of the day, are talking about not just public dollars, but the private dollars at work. There's really an opportunity, we feel like, for both private and public dollars to come together, to build something that's perhaps bigger and more meaningful than we've ever imagined. So moving away from the lake, the committee felt like another area that was unique and differentiating about Hickory itself was our Union Square and downtown area. There's just a ton to offer there, from Olinor Road to the Salt Block, to some of the existing green space, to, you know, some of the potential green space along the railroad, Union Square itself, even moving west where there's redevelopment now going on with Piedmont Wagon building, and so on. We feel like here again that there's a really unique asset that if polished, if brought together with some of the other investments, really has the potential to shine in this community. And I think, at least from my perspective, what I think it's worth mentioning is that the committee really wanted to, for starters, focus on what would be unique and differentiating for this community. There are a lot of ideas in the greater book that are good ideas, really solid ideas, with investment throughout Hickory, the community, and I think ultimately, we would all like to see everything, or practically everything, done, but when we were really focused on refining our recommendations, and for this group, really talk about what would be the heart of this, where would we best start, we really thought in terms of what was unique and differentiating about this city. And here again, we came to the lake and our downtown areas really being core features, and the idea being that we could build out from there. So now we proceed to downtown. We call it loosely speaking, downtown redefined, and this is a host of different things, and this is not a comprehensive list, more representative. We're talking about enhancements to Union Square itself, downtown streetscape improvements, a linear park along Main Avenue, connecting Union Square to the university, water features, fountains, splash pads, that kind of thing, greenway connections that link up a lot of the places here downtown, some of which I mentioned, the Salt Block, the Ivy Arboretum, and even some of the commercial buildings that have started to come on stream now, and we anticipate, and hopefully will continue to develop and emerge as more private investment follows this kind of public investment. There will be uniform design characteristics throughout this downtown redefine, and as I mentioned there, in general, fully expect new retail and other kind of commercial and residential development to follow, and it's, that's simply because that's what we've seen and observed, and other communities have observed, when they've made these types of investments. So redefining the downtown was, along with the waterfront, was very much a strong recommendation of the group here again, because we felt like it represented something very unique and had charm to it. Some of the concepts are represented here in various pictures. As you can see there, we're, you know, one is, I guess, the walk along Sugar Creek, if that's the right, in Charlotte, different kind of outdoor dining. As you see here, the water features that are referenced, on the bottom right-hand corner, you see the streets along with the rail, and walking paths, bike paths. We even got excited about something as simple as lighting up underneath the railroad pass, which you see there in the lower left-hand corner, kind of, here again, makes a statement, adds some charm, adds some, add some appeal to our unique city. So we feel like that this would be a great way to draw people to the community and encourage development as a result. Here again, wanted to emphasize, we're not talking about, you know, the city of Hickory doing this alone. It very much is our opinion that the private investment that's going on today will be followed by other private investment, and that very much baked into our recommendations is this notion of how can we leverage existing investment along with our investment such that we get something much bigger than we would have gotten acting alone, and these are just a few examples, of course, that you're familiar with, of things that are going on right now in this very place that we're talking about as a part of the downtown redefine recommendation. Now I'll take a little bit of license here, hopefully the committee will excuse that, but by coining a term, inspiring connections, because to me, what really starts to make, when I start to get really energized about this recommendation, or these recommendations, is the thought of connecting them. And we think there's a very unique opportunity to connect these two significant assets that we've just spoken about, the lakefront area and the downtown area, with a rails and trails type connection that would use the rail spur that links up the main line to Caldwell County as a means of passage from one area to the other, and talk about a really unique space that only Hickory would offer, and the charm that that would have, and even the industrial, call it realities, that one might encounter between here and there, I think, have a certain degree of charm, and do say something about the city and our past, and to a certain extent our present. So we feel like that's a really unique opportunity, and one that while perhaps one of the more complicated elements of our recommendations is very much worth pursuing, obviously there are a lot of unknowns that would have to be explored. As a reserve option, we discussed very much the Olinor Road as it being a possible way to connect the two areas, but I think this notion of, and I guess it's most important to me that, to leave you with the thought of, it's really when you put these spaces together and link them up, that they have, you know, a particular impact, I think, on visitors and Hickory citizens alike, and so linking them up is something that we strongly recommend. And, you know, here again, if you look on the right, we're talking about linking for pedestrian traffic, LR University, the Salt Block, a lot of the east side commercial developments that have emerged recently, Union Square itself, certainly the downtown commercial retail element connected to some of the new development that's going on, I mentioned Piedmont Wagon, to the lakefront park, the riverwalk and the stadium, having all that kind of connected and accessible to pedestrians and bicyclists, potentially even maybe passenger trolley, we felt like is really a unique opportunity for this city to step out and make a statement and really make a name for itself in the greater region. And these are just some conceptuals that really kind of play out some of those thoughts. You see there, the bikers next to the rail line is very much something that we think would be a particularly charming asset for the community, and would drive development as well, whether it be bike rental, whether it be food, that kind of thing, there are common things that'll spring up along these types of kind of greenway connections. So moving on to gateways, so we talked about the waterfront, we talked about the downtown, talked about potentially linking them up, excuse me, and so next, the committee very much thought about and talked about at great length, the way of routing people into our unique city, a way to welcome them, a way to attract them, in a sense, a way to get their attention, to make a statement, and we started with those, with gateways, and there are a lot of ways to get into the city, bless you. There are a lot of ways to get into the city, there are a lot of gateways that were covered in the recommendations by Land Design, but ultimately, we felt like, here again, starting with the core, starting with what we felt would be the most essential, we identified these, I guess, four primary and secondary gateways, being I-40 at LR Boulevard, I-40 at 321 being primary gateways. And what we're talking about here could be very elaborate to something very simple. Very elaborate would be obviously some kind of unique art, or something of that nature. Very simple, obviously, could be something like, obviously, just horticultural, you know, type of features. But the idea in general with the primary gateways would be to make more, a larger statement, if you will, that would really call people's attention to Hickory and what we're all about here. We don't have any specific recommendations beyond just the fact that we feel like some welcome, some gateway there, of whatever form we ultimately decide, it makes sense as we attempt to make a name for ourselves in this region. And the secondary gateways, we talked about 321 at Olinor Road, and 321 at Highway 70. We felt like with these gateways, we could, you know, we were going to be able to tackle east-west traffic on 40, north-south traffic on 321. We basically had, and I'm going to make up a number, 80, 90% of the through traffic in our area is going to, you know, going to take notice of something about Hickory and allow us to make a statement to them, these being the more secondary gateways. A lot of rigorous discussion around Highway 70 at 321. We ultimately decided that that made a lot of sense, particularly to the extent that our charge is economic development and our focus. We feel like that corridor of 70 and 321 is very, very much ripe for an investment. We think with some basic infrastructure improvements and some enhancements to streetscapes, that there's really a great opportunity to give that particular part of town a big boost. So gateways are the welcome where Hickory, and then we get into the streetscapes themselves. And here again, we picked the lanes that we felt like were the primary lanes, were the best start, and the idea here, there's a myriad of different ways of going about streetscaping in terms of the configurations, the parking, the plantings, median or no median, bike lanes or not, and so on and so forth, but there's one representation here, but the idea in general is, we create this unique space, or unique spaces that we referenced in the front end of the presentation, let's steer people towards these unique assets along corridors that are especially attractive, and really make a statement all on the way from highway to town center, that Hickory is a unique and special place. So as you see here, LR Boulevard, clearly a major corridor, Highway 70, we referenced, very much has a ton of opportunity, we feel, Highway 127, both south and north of the railroad tracks, the Fourth Street Extension off of 70, and then Olinor Road being those primary roads that we identified for streetscape improvement. Streetscapes, and this is kind of the last component, we could focus our investment, we feel like, on this, these limited number of streetscapes, in part because with wayfinding, we can steer people down the corridors that we want them to go down. So we feel like if we can concentrate traffic through the signage, concentrate our investments, public investment in those upgrades, streetscapes, gateways, what have you, that wayfinding will be the means of steering people down those corridors in a way that we designed, and there's already been some work that's been done, and I think there have already been approvals that have been obtained with DOT, so this is work that's in progress and clearly could proceed under any set of circumstances, but we feel like there's a unique opportunity for the, to match the wayfinding with our other investments in such a way that here again, most of the eyeballs travel along those corridors that we've invested our funds in, in such a way that people really come away with an incredible impression of this city and what we're about. So in closing, you know, there's every bit of confidence that this group has that economic development is absolutely going to be the outcome of these types of investment, and notice that I've used the term investment throughout the evening here, you know, perhaps it'll be more difficult to convince some than others, but we absolutely don't feel like that spin, that we really are talking about investing in a way that generates a meaningful return for the city, and that's what we're recommending this evening, that we do take the time, commit ourselves, show the resolve to make those investments, because we feel like it'll come back in spades. Examples being some of the cities mentioned here, many of which we've visited and have seen the manifestation of those investments that were made, and how, you know, how effective those economic development activities have been in those particular cities. And there are examples even here, and you're familiar with them, of course, two listed here, Kataba Valley Boulevard, LR Boulevard, you know, relatively minor investments in the whole scheme of things relative to the private investment that follows, and the tax revenues that come as well as a result of that. So we very much feel like this is, this makes sense for us and for our future, and, you know, that public investment can draw people and business to an area and ignite a virtuous cycle, and that's what our, ultimately where our recommendations as a committee are about here this evening is about doing just that, really igniting something, getting something started, and to a certain extent, leveraging some stuff that's already been going on. I referenced some of the private investment and some of the refurbished mills and what have you, an excellent opportunity, we think, to keep the flywheel turning or even speed it up, and get the next kind of wave of investors in, and enjoy the benefits from both the tax and a quality of life perspective that we feel like is within reach for Hickory. So with that, I will ask any of my fellow committee members to chime in and correct me where I went astray.
Good job, good job.
Do you want me to take this in? Okay. Anybody have any comments, questions?
I have a few, just I thank all of your time and commitment, I think that's tremendous, and that you see the vision, you have the vision, you've seen it, you've gone to other neighborhoods, cities, and seen the tremendous amount of investment that follows this type of vision, and I think it's, we've got a unique opportunity with the assets we have to build on them and make this, as Stephen said, a unique, it's a unique opportunity to spur economic growth, to piggyback on what's already going on, and I think all of us really appreciate all the time and effort that you have spent on this committee. Appreciate it.
Well, I'd like to talk about the three prongs of Innovate Hickory, which is, we've got Inspiring Spaces, we have development of a business park, and we have development of a shell building or building. And the objective of all three of these pieces is to, is to build population to build jobs and build jobs to build population. The communities that we visited, well, I'm going to leave one out, maybe, but Greenville, Durham, Chattanooga, Burlington, Charlotte. The projects that they did are beautiful. They created a, an aura about the city, they created a buzz, but nobody set out to say, we want to do this to have a prettier city. This was about turning around economics in either the city at large or any particular city. This was about turning around economics in either the city at large or any particular part of the city. And I think that's what I'm hoping people will take from what we're trying to do, that we want to build jobs, to build population, and vice versa. What are comments?
Mayor, I'd like to comment just for a second on the, what I have noticed in our visits to these other communities. What I've seen is I have become familiar with this, this notion of public investment to spur economic development in population growth. I mean, if you look at our demographics, there is no, it's no secret, we're losing that 25 to 44-year-old. And not coincidentally, that age group, this is, these are the kinds of projects and the kinds of spaces that that age group is looking for. This is not, and there's data to back that up, that developing, developing communities now is a lot about building a quality of place. It's about raising the bar. And it's not so much about, you know, how are you going to manage sprawl and, you know, zone and all those kinds of things. It's about creating a community that, that is attractive to those, to those groups. We've got a fabulous, fabulous city. I mean, there's absolutely, I'm sure no one would argue that, and potential's there. And it's, I find it odd sometimes that people, the people that can see it the most are the folks that come in from out of town and move here. And we've seen it time and time again. We're seeing it with the Friends of Hickory group, that Allison Holzman and some of that crowd, I mean, they're not, they're not, they're not from Hickory. They haven't been through the Great Recession with us. And they hadn't seen Hickory back in the eighties as a thriving community. But they come here and they see the infrastructure, the skeleton, if you will, of a fabulous community and one that is relevant to that, to that age group. And I think that's really, really important within the context of this discussion of inspiring spaces, because as, as we continue to erode in that particular age bracket, it's going to be very difficult for us to maintain population. And without the population, we won't have people to buy and sell houses and cars and clothes and buy gas and eat at restaurants. It's, it's, I like Stephen's term of the virtuous cycle. And what we're on the, perhaps on the, at the watershed for us perhaps, is to go the way of trying to develop that virtuous cycle and come out of what we, I would probably call more of a vicious cycle, where we are losing the population and things are, property values are in somewhat of a decay. And we're fighting tooth and nail and scrambling for every job we can get. So, this is, this is big stuff. This is, this is the, the major league decisions that come before community. And I'm looking forward to this process, you know, continuing on and the discussions continuing on. It is right on target, in my opinion.
I want to piggyback on what Brad's talking about. What I took away from some of our visits, certainly Burlington, what was it, Delco? What was a big benefactor that helped, that won pharmaceutical?
Yeah, it's...
Anyhow, Burlington, certainly with Chattanooga and the man that developed the aquarium, Greenville, you know, we met with the developers there. You know, certainly a private businessman like myself, I'm looking, I picked up on those things. And to piggyback what Brad said, we are doing it from the right way. We're taking the Lackey project and we're going to expand on that, private investment. We're taking Paul Thompson's private investment and we're expanding on that. And that right there is the key, certainly the mill properties, expanding on that. That's the key, that's what we're doing right. And I think this is a, an excellent project and, you know, we're doing it right.
How, how do we implement this? What's our next step as far as putting buckets together for the bond issue? What do we as a council narrow it down and we say that we like, we like the waterfront program first, that's where we're going to put a share of the money? I'm just kind of at a loss in what our priorities are. And I think we need to establish that. And I don't know what the committee, they didn't necessarily put priorities on the projects, but we don't have much time left if we're going to do a bond issue in November to get this together.
Relative to that also is the cost of each of the projects and sales, I would think. Before we could decide a priority, we'd have to know somewhat, some kind of ballpark, figure on what the cost of each project would be.
Well, I think the, and I'm speaking from my perspective, and I deliberately ask for everybody's perspective too, but I think we have, at this point, I think we've got decent marching orders from the committee. We have some room to make some decisions. But I think we have decent marching orders. And I think we know, we know within ranges what kind of dollars we're talking about. Over, over the time between now and when we, when we call for the referendum, if we call for a referendum, this council will decide if we're going to call for a referendum or if we're going to handle this through, through other tax increases or if we're not going to do anything. All of these are still options, because we haven't committed by taking a vote yet. But we've gotten to, what, the middle of June to make a decision on the referendum. And the buckets, the buckets will not say, we want to spend a million-two from the entrance to Geithner Park to the terminus next to the 321 Bridge. The buckets will say, we plan to, we ask the voters to approve an issue of X dollars for improvements along the following lines. It's not going to say, this is exactly what you're voting for. If the next step, I think, is the next step is to decide, are we going for the referendum? If so, how much are we going for? If the referendum doesn't pass, what are we going to do? And if we do something without a referendum, how are we going to pay for it? And I know there's pretty big questions, but I, I'm hesitant to say we're going to do a referendum, because we, we have not sat together as a group and said, we're going to do a referendum. We've talked about referendums, we've talked about how much money we could raise with a referendum. For example, a $40 million referendum would go a long way to taking care of the priorities this committee has identified. A referendum of $40 million would give us, to say, enough money to cover most of these projects. The typical homeowner in Hickory has a $150,000 house, and that would cost the typical homeowner $120 a year to make $40 million of improvements. If you have a million dollars' worth of property, it's going to cost you $800 a year. I think that's right, about $800 a year, yeah. I'm at the point, speaking for myself personally, I don't want to, you mentioned virtuous cycle and vicious cycle. You know, another way to look at that is tipping point. I don't think we're at some tipping point where there's cataclysm over here, but I think we're at a tipping point where if I were in my business looking at, if my business were where I view the city being today, stagnant employment, stagnant jobs, hopefully we've seen the worst of the job losses. But if I were that place in my business, I would say it would be a conservative move to decide to invest now to boost my revenues and my net income and my net worth. I would say, if I had to invest, let's say the person that has a million dollars' worth of property invests $8,000 over the next 10 years, I believe that money is going to come back to that person who makes that investment. If I didn't, I wouldn't be sitting here talking favorably about doing a bond issue to make these things happen. And if we do 30 million, it costs the typical homeowner $90 a year, and at 20 million, it costs the typical homeowner $60 a year. And I know people's money's precious. I mean, they're out there trying to save money on cell, cellphone bills, on cable TV, at the gas pump. But what's, what kind of investment might return more, not just for our city, but for the individuals who'll be making that investment, than what I view as a fairly modest investment in our future? I don't know how it came, how it came around, preaching on that subject, but I think that's our timeframe.
There's a question.
Yes, ma'am.
May I address the committee and council?
Incidentally, this committee, this is your meeting, you don't, you may address us, you don't have to...
I just wanted to make sure, I didn't, I like to ask permission sometimes instead of forgiveness. I've kind of done both.
We are cutting off at 6:30.
Yes, sir, I understand. Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crane, and members of our esteemed committee, I want to thank all of you for your dedicated devotion and work. And most importantly, I want to thank our staff. I think Mick and Andrea have done a fantastic job, all of you that have been department heads. I've enjoyed this time together, and we've learned a tremendous amount. God bless Chuck Hansen in talking to us on some days, you know? I don't understand all the freeways or the facilities that he uses as euphemisms from time to time, but I do appreciate him. I think our committee has been committed primarily to economic development. In 2011, I speak to you sort of from a unique position, prior to even envisioning, or if this committee was a twinkle in your eye, so to speak. In 2011, we approached the investors, the local investors, I might add, of Holler Mill, about doing something creative. You know, in no way, I think, did we know that we would have 18 million to close to 30 million worth of development and investment from the private community as we do now. You know, it was an $8 million tax credit, the city did their part, we worked beautifully with the grants programs that you put into place, we were able to access those and we were able to leverage those into a greater, I believe, good for this community. I didn't want to be a catalyst project. None of us wanted to be a catalyst project, and look what has happened. I think that's been inspiring, and that's what our committee talks about. You know, I didn't know that Johnny Moretz was going to say, hey, let's do this now, or that Paul Thompson was going to think, I need to do Lyerly. But how exciting for what we've nicknamed South Hickory or SOHI, how exciting for our whole district to think that we'll have over 40 million of investment, 40 million in the next two years. So for tax revenues, Mr. Berry, I know that ours was somewhere around, I like to play with this, 90,000 maybe on the 18 million in property tax values. Well, what I heard from Warren Wood was, we were flat. Hickory's been flat with those revenues in previous years, but this begins the tide of raising that, all of those different investments. And what a surprise for the Lackey project to come on board. Well, of course, the committee, I think, believes that the Riverfront project benefits all. It's not one area or the area, it's our one natural resource that we then give to all. Of course, the Riverfront makes sense. And I think, Stephen, you did a phenomenal job of making that connection. Is it going to be complicated? Sure. Are things complicated that are well worth it? Absolutely.
And is it going to take a long time? Yes.
Not too long, Mr. Wright, Mayor Wright, not too long. Some of us are a little less impatient.
There are issues that are, but if we don't start now...
Absolutely.
If we don't start now, when are we going to start?
Exactly. The last thing I wanted to talk about was trust. I trust the council and the mayor to make the best decision with these buckets. I trust you to do this referendum. I trust you to find the ways to fund this. I trust you to do that. In five years, Mr. Berry, we're debt-free?
You can't do it.
This city has been incredibly respectful and responsible with our dollars. I moved here almost 19 years ago, and without getting weepy, I'm really proud to say two of my children are in the audience tonight. Will, who is the general manager of The Crossing and is working over at Rouches, which we created investment in nine years ago, and my daughter, who's recently graduated from Furman University. Our other son would be here, but he's busy working as the general manager of Highland Avenue Restaurant. And when I looked around the audience, many of us have family that live here, that our children have returned. It's not that inescapable to think that they want to be with us, because they do. And as Mr. Lael said, Hickory has so much to offer, we just have to capitalize on it. Funny word, capitalize. Invest, capitalize, look at our future. I trust y'all to make the right decisions about the buckets, but anything less than 40 million to me, after the 40 million that's already being invested in the last three years and will happen, to me seems like we're cutting ourselves short. Sun, moon, and stars. Let's reach for the sun, moon, and stars. I think that's what the committee meant by being inspired. Let's reach for that. If we land in the stars, okay, but we'll be among the best and we'll lead the way for the rest of this region. Really expect that we will all work together. I know that our committee is committed to doing whatever we need to do in the future to work with you. We actually have a plan, hopefully, that the business of Hickory, so, in our business, the front of house is called FOH, or Friends of Hickory, FOH. We want to create the back of house, which is sort of the engineer behind what we do in the restaurants. So, back of house will be the businesses of Hickory. And Steve Mull and I have committed, along with several other members, to getting, I hope, what will be somewhere in excess of a couple of hundred businesses to support your decision on June 17th to move this, to move us forward. Together, we can do this, and I really appreciate, again, our committee's work.
In my conversations with people around the city, the people who seem to have reservations about doing this, when you say, well, what is your solution? And they say, bring in jobs. And that's what we're trying to do. I have, you know, I say, well, when are we going to get the posse up and go round them out? You know they're, round them up, you know they're out there somewhere. Well, we got, according to Crisco, the former Secretary of Commerce, who tragically died last week, we've got the best economic development corporation in the state. We fund them adequately, not handsomely, but adequately, and they work, I think, very hard and very effectively for all of us in this county. There's no such thing as just rounding up these jobs. And I think we're doing the things needed to identify the, you know, what you do is you identify the consultants who will identify the businesses who might consider us in their top 10 list. So it's not, it's a very difficult process when we don't have the movement of jobs from the north like we used to. So, we're trying to change the buzz. We believe if we can change the buzz and make investments, that we can avoid this tipping point or go to that virtuous cycle. Virtuous, I like that. And I think we've, we've got to decide something right away. We know we've got our budget year coming up, starting July 1st. If we have a referendum, it has to be either this November or I have found out we could If we have a referendum, it has to be either this November or, I have found out, we could also have it with our election next November, right? If there's a primary next year, it couldn't be with the primary, it would have to be with the general election. If we don't do anything in the budget this year, and you're going to hear this discussion, I will tell you, one thing you should be happy about, I think, from what I've seen in other councils around the state, is you don't have a bunch of people who've already sat up here and made up their minds, met in closed, behind closed doors in private rooms. We are all thinking about what's going on from our perspective and who we represent. So you're going to hear a candid discussion. Do we go ahead and say, "Let's bump that budget this year because the referendum might not pass?" Or do we say, "We're going to wait and see what the referendum does," and that puts it off a year, and then do we say, "Well, let's wait, let's say we..." That puts it off a year. Or if we were to decide not to have a referendum this year, then we are off two years, almost.
I think the committee would say that was in anyone's best interest. I mean, I think we are all about acting now, and I think the idea of a tax increase in this budget to forward the riverfront park or any of the other things would also be something that I would hope y'all would consider, to spur us on. I mean, it's going to take that kind of development, that kind of investment for us to go forward. I think many of the committee members, not all, and I'm not speaking for the committee, but we have had similar discussions about, would you go ahead and do a tax increase to do some design and engineering or something for one of these projects? The other thing I want to just mention, Mr. Berry, you might want to speak to this, is the referendum guarantees where this money in those buckets goes. So if we say it goes into this area for infrastructure, this area for gateways, it doesn't get spent on some operational issue down the road, correct, Mr. Berry?
Yeah, it's all, it'll all go to capital projects, but as the mayor said, the language in the general statutes that you use is not project-specific. So it'd be like transportation. And then, you know, you would know, and city council would have a plan that said, "Transportation has these projects under it. Economic development has these projects under it."
Would you discuss the difference between tax increases, just in a regular format, versus what the referendum sort of says to the public and how those dollars are actually spent then?
Well, I mean, the referendum is actually, it does not have to be tied to property tax.
Correct.
I mean, you have, you have to show to the local government commission that you have some means of repaying that debt. So whether that's some other revenue source, or whether if this city council were to say, "Well, we're going to increase property tax by X, and that's what we're going to designate to fund the bonds if they're approved." But the city cannot borrow that money. They can't incur that general obligation debt without the approval of the voter. So that's kind of how those two pieces come together.
And does it all happen at one time? When you quote the number, the $120, that's at the top of what it would be at 40 million, correct?
That's right.
I think that's really important from an incremental basis, if you would just...
Yeah, once, yeah, thanks, that clarifies a little. So the voters would vote on whatever city council chooses to put on the ballot, so let's just use 40 million as the example. $40 million is approved by, by the voters in, let's say, three categories, as buckets is what we've been just loosely calling them. And those buckets have not yet been defined, as Mr. Zagoroli mentioned, that's kind of the next step in this process. Assume all three of those buckets get approved, they total 40 million dollars. The city doesn't actually go out and borrow the money until it needs the money. And the local government commission, state statute gives you seven years, and then you have the opportunity to ask for a three-year extension, so you potentially have up to 10 years to spend that money, to borrow that money, to spend that money, make those investments in the community. The city council could choose to only raise the tax rate as they issue the debt. So using the example of 40 million and $150,000 home, which equates to $120 a year, that $120 a year would actually be gradually levied by the city council over, up to a 10-year period of time. I mean, so it literally could be $10 a year, $12 a year, you know, every year for 10 years. So it's a, it's a gradual process.
I think that's really important to note, instead of people hearing that this is the number. It's almost like a line of credit with the bank versus a line with the set interest guy or...
Well, and you don't have to issue all the debt either. I mean, you know, if, if things were to improve in the economy, if the General Assembly in their wisdom were to grant the city an additional revenue source, and the city and council were to decide to spend that to pay the debt, you know, I mean, it's not fixed in stone that the property tax has to go up, but it's good public policy to say to your constituents and to the voters, "This is the plan, this is what we think it will be, this is kind of worst-case scenario."
Right.
It may not end up being that, but it could be that.
It's very similar to building a home. If the bank gives you a $150 line of credit, you're paying on what you take.
Yep.
You're not paying on, you're not giving the whole 150 upfront, so you're paying on what you use.
And to that analogy, that's why it's really important that we, that we understand that to build the home, if you will, the city needs to borrow. We cannot do it, just like you can't build a house through your income that you make on an annual basis. You have to, you have to use debt to accomplish big ideas like this. It's very, it would be, I would say, in my opinion, impossible to accomplish this with just some incremental tax increases.
Well, just like, you know, using our analogy.
You're right.
It's just impossible to go out and build a $200,000 house and bake that.
Probably.
So you're going to have a little risk.
You can do that, but the city can't do it, because can you imagine what would happen to a city that said, "We're going to, we're going to save up $40 million," and people are out there saying, "That's my savings account, and the city's holding on to it?" No, you can't do it. An individual could do that.
Theoretically.
City.
Maybe.
Well, I'm not speaking to the best of all of them. But the city would, the city would be crucified if we said, "We're going to borrow, we're going to save up and do this." Some council would come along and cave in. That's what would happen.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, we're in the north of the, in our committee, two of us in the north of the sphere tonight, suggesting to revisit very seriously the idea of referendum. Skip to increasing property taxes, because citizens can pay for it anyway. Avoid ramifications of referendum, increase taxes incrementally as needed to do to the projects as they're prioritized. We think that is more sensible, more logical. We have nothing to do with financing any project, that's your thing. And I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into the whole process of thinking about this, but I just wanted to let you know that some of us do question the idea of bond referendum, and if it were to fail, then you have to go back to raise taxes, that really wears heavily on the trust element, I think, the whole thing, just a thought.
Well, I hear you, and that's the sort of thing that I have often gotten up in the morning thinking about. A couple of issues about that. One is, if we raised the property tax 8%, that will generate 2 million a year, Warren? About 2 million a year. If we raised it 8%, then there would, you know, 16% would get us 4 million a year. It takes a long time to get these projects done. Second thing, we have a legislature, most people here probably do not realize that the legislature has enacted a law. Now, we are thinking it's going to be repealed, or we're thinking, we're thinking it's going to be debated, but they have enacted a law that would, that would say that a city or county cannot increase property taxes more than 8% in one year. Now, most people are going to say, "Why in the world would you have to ever increase property taxes 8%?" Davie County is building a high school, they're going to bring all of the kids throughout the county into one school, ostensibly a better quality institution there, and they are having to raise taxes about 20%. Their voters voted to approve that. But somebody in the legislature is saying, "Even though that's the case, there are people in Davie County who don't like that, so we're going to make a legis, we're going to pass legislation that would prohibit that." So you run in, we might not have the full degree of control in the future that we, that we think we'll have. And I'm not, I'm not necessarily dismissing that principle, because we have done pretty well the last 10 or 12 years. But if we're going to change the buzz, I'm not sure we can do it incrementally by raising taxes.
Mr. Berry, what would the, we did the increases, whether we taxed it whichever way we did it, and revenues started generating, what's the breaking point, or what's the index of what would mean we wouldn't have to raise taxes again? So if the revenue's coming in, what would that number be? What would that number look like?
Well, it's back to the numbers that the mayor just said. Basically, a penny on the tax rate generates $450,000. So if you had $450,000 a year coming in from increased sales tax or some other revenue source, that in effect replaces a penny on the tax rate that you would need to support.
Or from increase in tax base.
Or if your tax base increases, I'm sorry.
Sorry, the tax base.
That hadn't happened in so long, we don't even think about that. I mean, I'm serious.
I always think about it, right? So that happens. I mean, that's, that's one of the...
Well, $100 million, Mr. Woods, our expert back there, $100 million in tax base gives us the $450,000 in property tax. Now, during, from 1982 to 2001, this city grew from 600 million to 4 billion. Makes it, you know, simplifies a lot of things. From 2001, it's grown from 4 billion to 4 billion. Okay?
Well, I think it's worth remembering, you're getting the two examples that I gave in the great, which was a force force. Clearly generating enough tax revenue to fund any debt service, in theory. So, absolutely, in my opinion, would be a worst case, if we ultimately had passed the kind of taxes that you're referring to. For various reasons, we're doing this to support and to catalyze, you know, business investment, which of course is going to do tax revenue with it. Maybe, maybe you can't make that, that can't be of us conservative protection, clearly. But to a certain extent, we would have failed, to the extent that we ultimately had to increase taxes to that extent, right?
That's true.
Well, and although it would not be legally binding, I would be a strong proponent of having a roll-off of these taxes as the need to invest the clouds.
I did want to mention...
That couldn't be legally binding.
I did want to mention one of the things, council, that I think is really important that you was talking about, when you talked about sort of the inspiring projects and things that we've talked about, is that one of the reasons I believe that Holler Mill and all of that Sohigh area has really developed is because of the widening extension of Lenora Boulevard. I mean, you talked about an economic tool that the city and the staff did a great job of opening up that to that. I don't think we would all be having this discussion about this mill development had that in the road, which again, people go, "Well, it's a road." Well, it looks beautiful, and it is, and it's one exit off of I-40 into where we're going, to Lenora University, and your college town, and what you want to promote with that. I think that is really important from an infrastructure point of view, when y'all are talking about your projects, to know that that's what really fueled that, the same way that Valley Boulevard being opened up did as well. I think we don't want to think about, and isn't this ironic, roads being helpful for me, but I do think those were. I don't think about that one, and I want to...
We have gotten past our 6:30. I will, I am ecstatic that we've gotten the dialogue started.
Yeah.
And I agree too, though, with what Stephen was saying and Meg Captain, is we've put
sort of the infrastructure, the easy stuff, and need to make it a good investment for people, and that we built the infrastructure and they came, and what wonderful benefit the city is, is having because of you.
If you look outside, there's a, I didn't even realize it was out there, but there's a, an index card that has all of our phone numbers on it. Call us and tell us what you think, how you feel. The next two months are going to be perhaps the most significant of all the time that I've served on this council. And I'm listening. We'll be back here...
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, before we recess, I'd like to move that we accept this report from the Inspiring Spaces Committee, the final report.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Lael, second by Ms. Patton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous, and everyone's present. Thank you all for being here. If you want to speak on this subject or any other, we will have public comment at our regular meeting.